Before we get started here, Timmy's gonna lead us in the word of prayer. But when we stand, we want to take a moment in silence just to remember and honor Hollis Dehart. He was one of our past mayors, and Hollis passed away. Most of us here sat on the council with him, and when he was mayor, or sat on the council with him. And he was a good man. He was a good mayor. And we appreciate Hollis. So we just want to take a second and remember Jane, and Matthew, and Lisa, and the family. And so if you would, stand with us, we'll take a minute in silence. Timmy will lead us in prayer. David will lead us in the pledge allegiance.
We just thank you for all your blessings. And we'd ask, Lord, that you'd forgive us anywhere that we might fall short, and just help us do the things that you want us to do. We ask that you'd have your way here in the meeting tonight, that whatever is decided on would be in your will, Lord. We just thank you once again, and ask you to go with us and help us do things that please you. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, it's all right. We call the Russell Springs March 9 regular call meeting to order. The first thing is, Chris, give me a roll call.
Mr. Barnes?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Ms. Daniel?
Here.
Mr. Blakey?
Here.
Mayor, you have four.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Council. The first thing on the agenda is acceptance of the minutes. Chris sent them out to you, hoping you've had time to look over them. And I need a motion to accept them if ain't no addition or contractions to them.
Make a motion to accept the minutes.
Taken.
Roll call, Chris.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Blakey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next thing's acceptance of the cash or firstments, or financial statements to pay the bills. And just like Chris sent them out too, I hope you've had time to go over them and look at them. Do we have any questions on the bills?
I move that we pay the bills.
Thank you, Sherri. Need a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, Chris.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Blakey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we have nothing on old business unless the council's got something they want to bring back up. Does anybody got anything on old business? No old business. Well, the next thing on the agenda, Chris has got a resignation letter from Tommy Hope. Could you please read that, Chris?
Uh, dated March 8th to me. Dear Mr. Ramsey, I am writing to inform you that I am resigning from my position as member of the Russell Springs City Council effective immediately. It has been an honor to serve on the council for the past several years. I am grateful for the opportunity to have worked alongside such dedicated individuals. I want to express my sincere appreciation to Mayor Eddie Thomas, the city council members, city employees, and the citizens of Russell Springs for their support during my tenure. I have learned so much from each of you and will always cherish the memories and experiences we share together. As I step down from my position, I am confident that the city of Russell Springs will continue to prosper and grow under the leadership of our capable elected officials and dedicated employees. Please know that I will always be an advocate for our community, and will continue to support its growth and development in any way that I can. Thank you again for the privilege of serving on the city council. I wish you all the best in your future endeavors. Sincerely, Tommy Hope.
So we're one less council member. Tommy has resigned, so we have 30 days to replace him, or Governor will appoint somebody. So if the council wants to see it, wants to appoint somebody to replace Tommy, deny it sooner, or wait, have a special call meeting, we're at you all right now.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Lisa Mann to this vacancy because she's, Lisa's been a faithful helper with any kind of event that we've ever hosted for the city, and she's also served several years on the cemetery board. She has also previously served on the city council before, so she would come to us with some knowledge of, based on that. So I'd just like to make that motion.
You got a motion on the floor?
Taken.
Got a second. She's got a second. Chris will have a roll call.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Blakey?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Council. You'll have six at the next meeting. Chris will get over her in the next couple of days and get her four in. And we'll be back to a full council. And she will have to run in November, this November. It'll be a special action for that seat. So she'll be running this November, and then if she wins, she'll run next November. So that's how it works. So the next thing on the agenda is a very important thing. It's a good day for him, but a sad day for the city of Russell Springs. Terry Russell's been with us a long time, and I remember when Terry started. And he's been a faithful employee. Most of all, Terry is one we can call on when we need something, and he's always here for us. You don't know how much we're gonna miss him. I feel sorry for Allen, or Big Shoes, to feel, but he's, he's, he's a good, and we're gonna do a proclamation for Terry, and Chris is gonna read it.
A proclamation, whereas Terry Russell has dedicated his career in serving the city of Russell Springs with distinction, and has made significant contributions to our community, and whereas Terry Russell is an avid fisherman who loves spending time on the beautiful lakes and rivers that surround our community, and has helped to promote fishing and outdoor recreation in our area, and whereas Terry Russell has been a dear friend and leader to many in our community, and his kindness, generosity, and dedication to public service has touched the lives of countless residents. Now therefore, I, Eddie Thomas, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor, do hereby proclaim March 31st, 2023, as Terry Russell Day in the city of Russell Springs, and extend to him our heartfelt appreciation and gratitude for his many years of service and leadership. Furthermore, I hereby recognize Terry Russell as an honorary citizen of the city of Russell Springs, and invite him to visit our community at any time in the future, where he will always be welcomed with open arms and warm hospitality. In witness whereof, I have heron to and set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Russell Springs to be affixed this night and the day of March 2023. Signed, Eddie Thomas, attested Christopher Ramsey, City Clerk.
Come on up here, Terry.
You don't have your, have you not got your, have you got your speech just memorized?
I do not have a speech.
It's Eddie. I don't, you, you.
Why, I believe we can hang on to it.
Now, now, just, you're an Eli, so we want to make sure you're a citizen of Russell Springs.
Appreciate that. Yeah, that sounds good.
This is for you. We appreciate what you've done, and just to let you know, you know, that we, we are gonna miss you, and we love you, and we sure hope you had a good time and a good ride. And I know leaving, you're gonna be, you're gonna do well. I know that, whatever your endeavor is, so. Let me get my hand off of it. God, it's so heavy. Now, I got another for you here. This is what Chris read. Now, your day will be the, be the 31st.
Okay.
So the radio and the paper, the 31st of March is Terry Russell Day. So I want everybody in Russell County to remember it's Terry Russell Day. Now, you, you, you talk all you want to. You get more than two minutes.
Well, of course, you know, in November of 94, or whenever I started this little journey, you just don't realize how time goes by as quick as it does. I think I went through five mayors, several commissioners, several councilmen and women, and they've all been, they've stuck with me on the decisions we've made over the years. I brought ideas to them. We've got several grants throughout the years, and bring stuff to them. They've always been behind me, and I appreciate that, the support. And it's, you know, it's been an honor to be able to serve, and I wish the city nothing but the best from here on out. And, you know, if I can ever help, once again, I'm always available to whatever I can do to help out. And I thank you all very much.
Thank you, Terry.
Here. It is heavy.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you, Terry. Thank y'all for coming. Terry has brought a lot of stuff to me, and he's saved the city a lot of money, and he's, he's been good to work with. Allen, I hope you're as good as he is to work with.
He was doing excellent job. He was.
All right. The next thing on the agenda is a second reading of ordinance 2023-01, an ordinance governing the Russell Springs Veteran Banners Program, sponsored by Councilman David Blakey. This is just the ordinance of where we're redoing the banners, and we will be taking over that and doing it in-house here. So Chris, you want to read the second reading of that?
Uh, ordinance 2023-01, in order to establish a veterans banner program, be ordained by the city council of Russell Springs, Kentucky. Section 1, the purpose. Purpose of this ordinance is to establish the city of Russell Springs Veterans Banner Program to honor and recognize the service of veterans who have honorably served in the United States Armed Forces. Section 2, program details. The Veterans Banner will consist of the creation and display of the banners to honor veterans. The banners will have a one-time cost of $150 per banner and will be displayed for four years. Banners will be displayed from May until November each year. After the four-year display period, banners will be given to each veteran or the family. Eligibility for the program will be determined by having an honorable discharge from the United States Armed Forces. Section 3, banner designed to display. The design of the banners will include the veteran's name, branch of service, and a photograph. The city of Russell Springs will design the banners. The banners will be displayed on light poles located throughout the city of Russell Springs. The city of Russell Springs will be responsible for the installation and removal of the banners. Section 4, application process. Applications for the veterans program will be available online or in person at City Hall. The application will require proof of honorable discharge from the United States Armed Forces and payment of the $150 banner fee. Application will be reviewed and approved by the city of Russell Springs. Approved applicants will be notified of their acceptance in the program and provided with information on the banner design process. Section 5, enforcement violation of any provisions of the ordinance may result in the removal of the banner and/or disqualification from the program. Section 6, effective date. This ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage and the adoption by the city council of Russell Springs. Signed, Eddie Thomas, Mayor, attest, Christopher Ramsey, City Clerk. First reading February 9th, second reading March 9th, and sponsored by, I forgot who it was sponsored by.
Tommy Hope.
Tommy Hope. But it was actually to change.
David Blakey.
David Blakey, yeah.
Any discussion? Need a motion to accept the ordinance?
I make a motion to accept the ordinance 2023-01.
I'll second.
Second. Sherri, Ricky, thank you. Chris, roll call.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Blakey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, before I go to the next thing, I want to let everybody know, the box, the shadow box you got on your desk, that is the bullets that come from us raising the flag over the veteran cemetery. So that's just a little keepsake, 'cause y'all helped. David was inspiration in on that, and we got our cemetery fixed over there for the veterans, and we done had one buried in it. So we're really proud of that city of Russell Springs. We're just trying to take care of our veterans. That's what, that's what we're supposed to do, and that's what we're doing. So the next thing is a second reading of ordinance 2023-02, an ordinance relating to parking violations, restrictions, penalties, and impoundment of motor vehicles. That's sponsored by Ricky Barnes. Chris, will you read that second reading?
Yes. For the second reading, I don't have to go through the whole thing because nothing has changed from the first reading of it, but I'll just go ahead and make sure everyone knows it repeals any and all previous ordinances, including 2003-10, 2003-12, 2013-01, and 2013-04. The fines, I do have to say those, double parking, 25; parking on sidewalk, 25; walk ramp for persons with disabilities, 75; parking in an area prohibited by official signs, 25; parking adjacent to yellow painted curb, 25; improper painting, parking in an area designated for persons with disabilities, 75; parking within six foot of a fire hydrant, 50; parking adjacent to a designated fire zone or red painted curb, 50; parking in a manner which blocks a driveway or encroachments upon a roadway, 25; failure to display a handicap permitted parked in a handicap space, is 75. And the appeal process, you can appeal it through the code enforcement. If you then want to turn around, and you can appeal that on up to District Court, would be all the way up to that one. Is that correct, David?
Yes.
Okay. And that would be second reading of that ordinance.
That was sponsored by Councilman.
Councilman Barnes.
Yeah. So we got any discussion on that? If not, I need a motion to pass the ordinance?
I'll make motion to pass that ordinance.
Thanks, David. Need a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Chris. All right, give us a roll call, Chris.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Blakey?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Council. The next thing on your agenda is the 23-24 interlocking homeless prevention report agreement. That is the one with the county. That's the $1,500 we donate to the county, and Jamestown does, and the county, and it's just an interlocking agreement with them for the homeless, and Chris has been involved in that since it started. And Chris, you want to read that?
Uh, I'll summarize it. It's the same as we've done the previous years. City of Russell Springs will contribute 1,500, City of Jamestown will contribute 1,500, and Russell County District Court will contribute 1,500. The appointees is Russell County Sheriff, or designate need, Russell County Attorney, or designate need, Russell County Judge Executive, or designate need, Mayor of Jamestown, or designate need, Mayor of Russell Springs, or designate need. And it has already been signed by County Judge Executive Randy Markham, and attested, and I guess us, and then the next one will be the city of Jamestown. And that would, that's all that's on that one. If anybody's got any questions?
Anybody got any questions?
One quick question.
Okay.
That's just $4,500 for homeless people for an entire year. I'm not saying we need to give more, but what happens if they run out of money?
Uh, they'll actually call us to request more. So far, we have not run out. I do believe the county pitched in some extra last year. Of course, the history of the program was first, it was me and HM did it first, and then now it's myself and Tojo Bray, so the project.
I mean, it's hard to get a definite number of homeless, you know. We, do we have much of a homeless problem in Russell County? I know they do in Pulaski County, in Somerset, but...
It fluctuates in seasons. It's warmer.
It's warmer weather, it's gonna get warmer or something.
What's Council's desire? I need a motion to...
I'll make the motion.
Motion, Sherri. Need a second?
I'll second.
Second. Him, need a roll call, Chris.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Blakey?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Council. The next thing is Resolution 2023-03. It's the anti-annexation. This is at the KLC's request. Chris has got to read that. Is it, that's what JD called me about today. This is really getting kinda at the forefront right now. Matter of fact, JD Chaney called me today in Morgan, and I called Max Wise, and called Rick Garber, Josh Franscom. They're trying to make it to where the county, we would have to go through the county just to annex property. And that means if it's even consensual, we'd have to go through the county. So they're wanting us to do this for them, so. Go ahead, Chris.
Uh, Resolution 2023-03. A resolution opposing the passage of any anti-annexation legislation. Whereas the city of Russell Springs opposes any legislation proposed by the Kentucky General Assembly that would place a moratorium on future annexations or require city governments to obtain county approval to annexing territories. Whereas we believe that the economic development of the state of Kentucky largely takes place in cities, and any anti-annexational language has the potential to strike with the recent growth in the region. Furthermore, we reject the notion that counties are using misinformation to persuade legislators that there have been many non-consensual annexations. In reality, nearly all the recent annexations have been requested by the property owners themselves. A moratorium on annexation would infringe upon their rights. Finally, we oppose the proposed legislation because it would effectively subordinate cities to counties. We believe that cities should have the autonomy to make their own decisions regarding annexation, and that requiring county approval would impede their ability to do so. Now therefore, it be resolved that in light of these concerns, we urge legislators to reject any legislation that would limit the annexation powers of city governments or require them to seek county approval for future annexations. This resolution shall have the full effect and force of law upon passage according to the laws and ordinance of the Commonwealth of Kentucky, and under my signature this night and day, March of 2023, signed by Eddie Thomas, attested Christopher Ramsey, City Clerk.
Need a motion?
We need a motion.
I need any questions? Anybody got any questions about it?
What good will it do for us to do the resolution? Any, will it make any difference?
I don't know. They just asked it to.
I don't mean to be snide, but you know what I'm saying, it...
But if we're against it, we need to vote yes.
We need to let them know we are against it.
We need to send it in.
Yes.
It's, it's, we got some property out there right now. People's wanting to stay in XN, and it, it, it's a pretty good process to do it now, but then if you have to go through the county and everything else, it's even gonna make it a lot worse, right?
Maybe it won't come, but...
It might be worse. Yep. We all... Promotes Lady Switzer's pre-rough.
You need a motion? Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion.
Thanks, Tim. Need a second?
And I'll happily second.
Second. Sherri, roll call, Chris.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Blakey?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you, Council. The next thing on the agenda is executive session under KRS 61810-1C. It's a discussion of proposed or pending litigations against or on behalf of the public agency. So a motion to do that.
I move that we go into executive session of KRS 61810, Section C, to discuss proposed or pending litigation.
Got a second, Ricky. Roll call, Chris.
Mr. Blakey?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Motion carries, it's 6:24.
Okay, we will be going into executive session at 6:24. You all can stay around, you know, it shouldn't take long. Wait, don't run off.
I move that we exit executive session under KRS 61810-1C to discuss proposed or pending litigation.
Got a motion on the floor, and need a second? Take a second, Tom. What's time, Chris?
I've got a call, roll call. Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Blakey?
Yes.
Uh, it is 6:39.
6:39. Uh, we are now out of executive session. There was no action taken. There was, we couldn't take no action in executive session.
I move that we give Mayor Thomas the authority to negotiate a settlement of a claim that was discussed in executive session on March 9th, 2023, with a final report to be given to the council.
You got a motion?
No. Make a motion to accept that.
Second, Dave. Sherri, David roll call, Chris.
Mr. Blakey?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Council. Uh, we'll be getting back with you on that. Mr. Pierce, you have the floor, sir.
Okay, for the month of February, we had one DUI arrest for alcohol, one DUI arrest drugs, had a AI, a PI, five warrants served, 61 traffic stops conducted, 50 citations issued, six speeding tickets, there were 21 traffic accidents, 24 motor assist, 11 alarms, and four cases opened, and 47 ABC inspections for Springs, a yearly total of 93 inspections.
Thank you, Chief.
Sir.
Anybody got any questions for Chief? Thank you. Economic Development Report, Mr. Coffey?
Uh, nothing. Some going on. Last week, Mayor Thomas and I had a conference call with Mr. Whitaker, the Hardee's owner. He had been in Florida all winter, and he is back, and progress on Hardee's is on track. They're planning to do some core drills out there this week for compaction, and hoping they'll start construction in the next month to six weeks. Still gonna try to open toward latter part of this year. So that's, and lines from the, the Kmart, the possibility of the rental of that, the lines of communication has reopened, and there is some progress being made toward that. So don't know what'll happen, but at least we're back at the table talking, so.
Thank you, Jeremy. Appreciate it. Uh, Council, you got anything, or give a mayor's report?
I'd just like to brag on our firemen a little bit. Monday, they were on the Cumberland Parkway blocking traffic because of the garbage truck that had overturned or whatever, and they did a great job. It was Mark and Ronnie Jackson up there. And I, I got to sit with them for about 45 minutes Monday afternoon, and when I came back through, they were still, I think some of the city police were there when I came back down. Parkway, believe me.
Was that Morgan's stuff that turned over?
It was one of our, one of Morgan's that had turned over, had flipped out.
Yeah, I saw it. I'd come down through there.
It was quite the mess.
Not only that, I want to compliment them on the storms. I know they started about 11 o'clock, and we sent them pizza over there about 6:00. They were still working. One, one call right after another. 911, couldn't dispatch them enough, they had so much stuff going on. So, you know, our police, our police and fire department, you don't know how important So, you know, our police, our police and fire department, you don't know how important they are till you need them. Your house is on fire, you need them. If somebody's breaking in your house, you need the police. So, you know, they don't get kudos as much as they ought to. But now that fire department, I'm telling you, they, uh, I was amazed and impressed with how much they done, and I've got something to say about that here. Anybody else got anything?
They're hard to beat. I don't have to say that.
On the mayor's report, uh, the first thing is the fire department renovation is complete. So if y'all want to stop over and look at it and see what we've done for the guys, it's a hot, hot and place, and they're proud of it. I mean, if you go over there, they want to take you through it, they want to show you, and, uh, they're excited about it. Then the next thing is park damage. We ended up with, uh, Jeremy done estimates on that and went over and worked, and we ended up with about a hundred thousand dollars worth of wind damage in the park, and KLC Insurance is assisting with, uh, the cleanup now, so, uh, they will let us know what they're gonna cover and what they ain't. Then the next thing is I met with Kevin Williams, uh, last week, and he will have a video for us next month, uh, like he did last year. Kevin's Kids Benefit Conserv will be on April fifteenth at First Baptist Church. It's where it's at every year, and, uh, he's excited about that. If you know Kevin, he's, uh, he's, you'll hear about it, and that is coming, because he's really fired up about it. Then the next thing, the city hall will be closed temporary on Thursday, March thirtieth. From eleven-thirty to one-thirty, we will be having a celebration for Terry down at the community center. So if y'all want to come and eat pizza, you know, he's gonna cook for you. And you know Terry Sullivan, or Terry Russell, he don't want nothing, just like he didn't want to say nothing here tonight, but he, uh, he wanted pizza, and that's what we're gonna have. So I wish y'all could attend, just come in, stop, thank you for what he's done.
Kinda hurt my feelings. I figured he didn't want my cooking.
Sure, he was gonna cook for him, and in order, he was gonna cook for him, and everybody wanted to cook for him, and he going pizzas, so. Uh, if you all get a chance, stop by, eat a piece of pizza, and, you know, Terry's been a big inspiration to the city, and it's grown with him, so you all, uh...
What day'd you say?
The thirtieth. Thursday, the thirtieth.
Okay, the thirtieth.
Yeah, and then the thirty-first is Terry Russell's day in the city of Russell Springs. And then the la, uh, the next thing is the, uh, guy left there, I can't think what his name is. I guess he was here about the Easter egg hunt we're having over at the Russell Springs City Park, uh, we will be having on April second, an Easter egg hunt. This event will partnership with Russell County Judge Executive Randy Markham and the Russell County Fiscal Court, the city of Jamestown, Three Trees, and, and the city of Russell Springs. There'll be more information on it to come as it follows forward, but they're gonna, uh, have a big Easter egg hunt over there, I think is, is what you wanted there, Cody, for the kids, and, uh, they had one last year, but it was just a real quick thing, so this year, they're gonna have a, have a, I was gonna say Bugs Bunny, but they're gonna have the Easter Bunny over there, and...
Is that gonna be you, Cody?
I think, Wade? That's what I was, are you gonna be the Easter Bunny?
I think I need to get my hair done.
Well, you don't, okay, I thought...
It's time to see, I want to do it.
That's why I wanted you to stay. They want, they need somebody to be the Easter Bunny, so. And the Easter Bunny don't wear shorts, so. Zach?
Well...
But it's, it, it's gonna be a community event for everybody, and I, I look for, I look for it to be pretty huge. I know, uh, I talked to Wendy Markham, Randy's wife, and she said Three Trees is planning on cooking four hundred and fifty hot dogs, and it's gonna have, uh, music on the grounds. So, uh, they, they want to turn it into a big deal, so.